Hello everyone and welcome to another installment of the TC Palm Editorial Board's Interviews with Candidates who are on the August 23 ballot. Today we'll be talking to the candidates for the Group Seat 3 on the Stewart City Commission, and we are joined by both of the candidates in seeking the seat, Christopher Doc Collins and Merritt Matheson. And I'm Blake Fontanay, I'm a columnist for TC Palm and an editorial board member. And also participating in the interview are three other editorial board members, fellow columnists Larry Reesman and Ed Killer, and our executive editor for TC Palm, Adam Neal. The format today will be typically we will alternate questions between the two candidates. For the most part, the candidates will be asked the same questions, and there may be an occasional question that's directed only to one candidate specifically, but more than likely we'll give you both a chance to answer the same questions. I will take the lead in asking most of the questions, but at some point during the broadcast, I will turn it over to the other editorial board members and see if they have additional questions. We'd like to keep this to about 45 minutes, and this broadcast will be available for viewing on the TC Palm website, and it's also a tool that we use in evaluating candidates to determine if there's someone we would like to recommend in this race. So we will go ahead and get started, and Mr. Collins, we will start with you. The first question is if you could describe one ethical dilemma that you have faced in your life and how you dealt with it?
Ethical dilemma? I mean, off the top of my head, I don't have a good answer for an ethical dilemma. I have owned and operated a practice, a chiropractic practice in downtown Stewart for the last 10 years, and that is, you know, there's always the opportunity to bill fraudulently or, you know, do things that are not above board. So I would say in my practice, I'm always trying to be above board and operate clean so I don't have to look over my shoulder. And also too, I, you know, I have a cash practice. I serve the residents of the city, and my business comes from good customer service and providing a good service to people, so that's it.
Excuse me, I muted myself there. Mr. Matheson, the same question for you. Please describe one ethical dilemma that you've faced and how you dealt with it.
I do agree with my opponent on this one. That's a, that's a tough question. For years now, I've taken annual ethics classes on behalf of the city. I would say in my observations before deciding to run, I think general politics overall in our country has, has ethical dilemmas proposed to two candidates. And when I saw that and got invested in considering running for the City of Stewart Commission, I made a pledge to myself to not accept any campaign contributions, although they are, it's a legal practice, from anyone that as a profession comes before the City of Stewart Commission, asking for votes. What I mean by that is builders, developers, land planners, land use attorneys, traffic engineers, lobbyists, to sum it up. And while this is a common practice in all of politics, and it's, it is ethically allowed, I've pledged, and now I'm on my third campaign and have kept that pledge, to not accept contributions from those that routinely and professionally come before the city commission, asking for, for votes to help them with their projects. And that helps me know that I'm making proper decisions based on the facts and my conversations with residents and experts.
Thank you. One thing I also should have mentioned from the top, I appreciate you all answering the questions briefly, and we want to give you a chance to go into whatever detail you need, but please do keep your answers short. That, that was a fine example on both your parts. The next question, back to you, Mr. Matheson, we'll alternate on who goes first. And tell me what lessons can be learned from the Costco case that was in the news quite a bit over the last year or so?
Well, some of the biggest lessons are policy changes the commission has since made from that. And what I mean is the Costco property was annexed in 2016 and 2017, and the commission's policy at that time, prior, I was elected in 2018, but I attended a lot of those meetings. And the commission's policy at the time, and the decision they made with that annexation was to annex the property without deciding a future land use until there was a development application in for the property. And, you know, looking back on that entire process, I do understand some of my fellow commissioners reasoning for that, but I disagree with that because when you have a future land use, that helps all the commission and the general public know a baseline of property rights. And since that, that baseline wasn't there with the Costco property, there's kind of this gray area, and that's why we're in the predicament that we're in right now. The Costco parcel was, is kind of a special case scenario, and that's something I and other commissioners discussed after the initial hearings and changed that policy. That doesn't, that the City of Stewart Commission will not be following that policy anymore. If there are future annexations, the future land use will be decided upon at the annexation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Collins?
Mr. Collins?
Same question. What lessons can be learned from the Costco case?
I agree 100% with Merritt. That was, it was really a messy, poorly executed how it was zoned, and then even from there, beyond that side of it, I would say really listening to residents and getting enough feedback in that zoning front end, you know, before moving forward with things like this. It shouldn't be that you have this backlash from the community and then it, you know, the mess happens. There should be a listening to the residents, really getting a sense of how people feel about it, and you're never going to make everybody happy. Everything's a compromise, but it did not seem like the, the community had a full understanding of what was happening from, you know, that there were these apartment units that were attached to it, or what exactly was happening with zoning. It was very confusing all around. So I would say more clarity, more transparency with projects like this that are basically going to be, you know, the middle of the future downtown Stewart. That's a very busy intersection and area already, and as downtown Stewart extends out in that direction, it's going to increasingly be the middle of downtown Stewart. So we really need to think these things out and make sure all the residents have a good sense of what's going on so you don't get backlash on the back end.
Thank you. And Mr. Collins, I will start with you on the next question as well. Since you mentioned multifamily housing, do you feel like Stewart has enough multifamily housing?
Yes.
Okay, would you care to elaborate on that?
Sure. You, I'm a big fan of single family homes. I'm not a huge fan of packing people into high density apartments. I don't think that's a good philosophy for the development of Stewart. That may be a paradigm that works in places like New York or San Francisco or Portland or wherever, but I don't think in this perfect little beautiful beach town, that is one of a kind, that we need to be looking to house people and families primarily, you know, new, new development be apartments, so especially high density apartments, 1-1s and 2-2s, what's been going in recently. We've approved 3,000 units in the last, what, four years, but more like two, and that's not the direction I think we should be going.
Thank you. Mr. Matheson, same question for you. Does Stewart already have enough multifamily housing?
Yes, back in, I believe it was February at a meeting, I was one of the commissioners, maybe the only one that, that called for a pause in new applications and proceedings, anything outside of the CRA, but for us to really come up and take a breather. What's been happening in the past few years is we've seen a boom in building from about the past 15 years since the 2008 crash, where stuff was still approved and there's been a lag time, and we're seeing the results of approvals over the compression of about 15 years that are, have recently been built with the way Florida successfully handled the pandemic and our recent economic boom here, and property values have increased significantly. I called for that pause because I recently volunteered to sit on the School Board Advisory Committee that helped recommend to the School Board adjustments of school districts. That being said, and the fact that I'm the one commissioner with the strongest record of voting against high density residential projects, although some of those have passed, and some have been successful at voting down. The City of Stewart is the heart and seat of the county, and to combat sprawl, and one of the things that makes Martin County and Stewart as a whole is, is we have, both have comp, comp plans that encourage us to combat sprawl. We try and keep building inside our urban services boundary. That helps make our tax dollars more efficient, impact fees more efficient, and provide higher services to the, to, to our residents. So, you know, apartment buildings, if they are to be built, should be built in the City of Stewart, and they should be well thought out projects. But at this point, I have publicly called for us to, to let everything settle in so the city leadership can, can evaluate and ensure going into the future that we're providing quality services to all of our residents, meaning police, fire, public works, traffic, et cetera.
Okay, thank you. And let me stick with you going first on this next one.
Hey Blake, I think Doc want to respond with something?
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Collins.
So I think it's a little bit disingenuous to say that you haven't been the high density candidate when you personally have approved, what, like 2,500 of those units? And I also think it's disingenuous to sort of blame the growth that we're experiencing on an economic boom here, when you have personally approved those units. It's not just that you were the low density guy. You did approve high density apartments in Stewart. You approved the Harbor Grove, the ones behind the gas station there on Indian, the ones on Canter that are going in now, across from the hospital, the ones behind Aldi. I mean, these are projects you approved that are high density, right?
Yes, I've approved some and I've rejected others. Axis One, north of the bridge, the, the project that's getting built on Central Parkway, both those, I was the sole dissenting vote and are still getting built. I led the charge in communications with my LPA representative, who's also running, to reject a, a project on Commerce and Indian Street that was successful. I was the one that voted against the annexation of Bridgeview that's getting built. I look at each project and the facts surrounding that project and the, the costs and benefits. And the fact of the matter is Stewart does need and should have a balanced housing supply. And, and I'm not, I don't believe this, the city, the seat of the county should just focus on single family residential lots. That encourages sprawl. But each project has a high bar, and the, the more building that's going on in my mind, the higher that bar should be. But again, I've approved some and I've rejected some. I'm one of five votes and each project takes three to pass, and applicants know that.
So there, at this point, there is no more sprawl.
Please wait until I, I call on you. Go ahead, if you'd like to go another turn on this, Mr. Collins, but.
But just this idea of sprawl. So the county is effectively doing the same thing, right? The county is doing high density as well. There is no more sprawl. So at this point, all we're doing is just increasing the density in the city and in the county to put them in the urban service boundary doesn't help sprawl. Like in your mind, single family homes are sprawls, are sprawling, but I would say high density is a greater evil with more cars, more runoff, higher density, more traffic, potentially more crime. Like what is the worst evil, single family homes or that, you know, the sprawl thing? I don't understand.
Okay, Mr. Matheson?
I believe good leadership should look at everything and balance everything in moderation as a whole, but evaluate the facts. Because the county is experimenting with going outside the urban services boundary is something that I cannot control. I can talk to residents about that, and, and that has helped in some of my calls to reduce and have the city take a breather and some of my votes against projects. You know, but I will readily admit that I can't control the building going on in the county. And agree with, with my opponent that there is too much going on, and the, the urban services boundary should be a hard line in the county. But I'm a firm believer in a balanced supply of housing stock, and I'd challenge anyone out there right now listening to find a unit under $200,000 that's not over 55 that's a condo.
Thank you. Mr. Matheson, let me start with you on this next question. Is there a solution for the traffic buildup that frequently occurs along US1, Canter, Monterey, and other busy stretches of road?
So I'm a board member of the MPO, the Metropolitan Planning Organization, which deals with state and federal dollars. I'm one of two city commissioners. There's an Indian Town Commissioner and I believe four Martin County Commissioners and some, a Sewell's Point Commissioner on that board. In the upcoming years, we have prioritized a southbound right turn lane from US1 to encourage direct traffic onto Canter Highway. We have also directed the, the staff on that board to evaluate that intersection. You know, a, a lot of the traffic that comes in and out of the city originates from outside the city limits, both north and south. So looking at traffic as a whole, I, I've, one of my side projects has been to encourage multiple various means of multimodal transportation, bike lanes. I've been very supportive of the Marty bus system, and in projects that I've supported, I've, I've required them to carve out an easement to allow for a shaded shelter in the future. I've also been very supportive of trying to build stops for water taxi services using City Dock, Shepherd Park, Atlantic Point Marina, and have had talks with county commissioners on other stops. You know, the more means of people to get from point A to point B will help with traffic.
Thank you. Mr. Collins, the same question. Is there a solution for traffic buildups on US1, Canter, Monterey, and some of these other areas where there's a lot of buildup at certain times of day?
So, yeah, it's obviously worse at Rush Hour, but I would say this summer has particularly been revealing. Not, I would say increasing your population density, 3,000 units, okay, our city has a population of 16,000, right? You, you add 3,000 units, that's at least 20% increase in like two years of who's going to be able to live here. Please explain to me how that's not going to make traffic worse when you have this philosophy of packing people in the urban service boundaries and especially within the CRA and within the urban area. This is the area that has the hardest time with traffic. You're packing as many human beings as you can to save the county? I don't know, but you're creating traffic problems. Your hard limits, your bottlenecks are like at the base of the Roosevelt Bridge and trying to make a left. You can't make that lane go any, that left hand turn lane go any further back, right? So you need to first, instead of deploying a density philosophy because of urban service boundaries, you need to look at what this city infrastructure wise can handle. It is not West Palm Beach. We don't have the traffic infrastructure for these kinds of projects. If you do not want US1 to be a parking lot, then you need to reverse engineer what kind of traffic flow maximum you want to have that people can come and go safely, that they can patron shops downtown, that they can come to my office and get care. You need to reverse engineer what kind of traffic you're going to max out at, and then say, okay, this is the increase in density. This is the rezoning to planned unit development with more units per acre that we can handle. But that hasn't been the case. They've been doing the opposite and kind of hoping that that's going to work out because it fits that philosophy. So I would say stop adding more than, you know, more units than is zoned. You need to be straight zoning and stop making the problem worse, first of all. And then from there, given some time, if you, you can see what room there is for growth with the infrastructure that we have, because unless you're going to double decker like LA, you know, US1 at the base of the bridge, that's your hard limit. That's your bottleneck.
Thank you. Mr. Collins, let me start with you on this question. Do you support having a Brightline stop in downtown Stewart? And if so, what steps do you think the city government should take to facilitate that?
That's, that's a tough question. I don't have a great answer for it, to be honest with you. I don't love this situation with Brightline, and I don't know how much power, if any, we have over Brightline and what they're going to do. I think you start picking a fight with Brightline or trying to sue them or whatever, and all of a sudden they can push out their actual land that they own along that track. You can have a big mess. So that's one where, assuming I win, I'd like to get in and get more in the weeds and talk to the city lawyer and kind of see what, you know, what we can do, how much of a voice we can have with Brightline.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Matheson, same question. Do you support having a Brightline stop in downtown Stewart? And if you do, what steps can the city take to facilitate that happening?
Yes, so I, I've, you know, ran on a platform of trying to stop Brightline. I've gotten heavily in the weeds over the past four years in doing my research on, on what authority we have with Brightline. And, and the fact of the matter is, one, I'd be wasting everyone's tax dollars who's listening to try and stop them. In 2018, Martin County, a higher government agency than us, settled a lawsuit prior to my election. I've read that multiple times. That states regarding a station that within five years of operating their Phase 2, which is Palm Beach to Orlando, they have to put a station on the Treasure Coast. So your, your likely choices of that are City of Stewart, Fort Pierce, and Bureau. Bureau has adamantly said they are not supportive of one. Fort Pierce, from my observation, seems to be jumping up and down for one. And City of Stewart has taken the stance that we'll give Brightline the information they request, but that is not my top priority right now in dealing with Brightline. That's five years from operating passenger rails in Phase 2, which is Palm Beach to Orlando. That's anticipated to occur the first quarter of 2023. My top priority is spreading the message of public safety and mitigation, knowing the realistic authority and leverage we have with Brightline, which isn't very much. But mitigating the pain that is coming with Brightline has been my top priority. And that's why since the pandemic ended and last fall, when I realized Brightline had full authority to run and double track everything except for the one bottleneck that is proposed that they've gotten approval for, which is our St. Lucie River Rail Bridge, almost, almost 100-year-old bridge, that will be the one single track bottleneck. So I took the reins and have been as mayor, kind of the point person in discussing with Brightline and advocating, and the City of Stewart sent what I call a call for help to all higher elected officials urging them the necessity that we need a double track higher elevation rail bridge. I started those conversations last November, and this last February, Brightline came public with their engineered plans and their desire to, to make a new double tracked rail bridge with the marks that I gave them, which are, I wanted to be able to tell residents if a boat could pass under the existing Roosevelt Automobile Drawbridge, that it could pass under the new future rail bridge. They've hit those marks. The Roosevelt Drawbridge is 14 feet above mean high water. The proposed new rail bridge will be 16 feet above mean high water and will be a 90-foot wide span proposal with the existing Roosevelt Drawbridge is an 80-foot wide span. The importance of the double track is, we all know what happens if there's double track rail on either side of a single track bottleneck, and we could be looking at Brightline or freight trains having to go slow through downtown Stewart, causing blockage in our crossings there. So it goes well beyond boats. I've been leading that charge first as my top priority, knowing the fact that Brightline has five years and, and are basically being moot on the point of a rail station. So prioritizing it, the, the new rail bridge eases the harm that Brightline is bringing upon us, but if we have to have that harm, talking to residents, I would support a station here. We might as well get some benefit out of it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let me start with you on the next question. What can be done to help revitalize East Stewart?
Starting with me?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Okay. There's, there's a few things. The city, I, I've been heavily invested in East Stewart. We have two programs in our long-term capital improvements that are getting close to, to going out for bid for construction. One is examining Martin Luther King as a complete street. Complete street is not any one set of plans, but it's having neighborhood and community meetings discussing with residents how we'd improve that street. Colorado is an example of a complete street. Map Road in Palm City is an example of a complete street. The other major plans the city has directly is revitalizing Guy Davis Park. Recently, over the past few years, we put a cover over the basketball courts off 10th Street at Guy Davis Park, and we designed that cover so that in the future, walls could be built and that could be an enclosed structure. In 2019, 2020 or so, the city applied for and received a community development block grant for $750,000, which goes to the East Stewart community specifically for revitalizing homes. Major home improvements, I'm talking rebuilding roofs, impact windows, painting, rebuilding walls. We, we've received that grant and that's in progress as we speak now for those eligible residents. We've recently just received, as of literally only a few weeks ago, a over $4 million, another block grant for an application that we have to create a, a job incubator program specifically in the East Stewart community. This would be a facility. a facility where small businesses can start up, go and learn tech training, or even have a location to start a business for a short period of time. And then we would work with nonprofits to teach them how to do the startup and help them move from the location we provide out to other areas in the community.
Okay.
Wrap it up there.
Thank you. Mr. Collins, same question. What can be done to revitalize East Stewart?
I would echo what Merritt's saying. I think he nailed that one on the head. So they are looking to do the same kind of map road, complete street. They've budgeted out with grants and everything to revitalize the sidewalks and make it beautiful through there. And our city manager, these guys are doing an amazing job securing grants and planning out with the capital improvements. If you guys sat in or caught one of that budget meeting, there was a lot in there, but they're doing a great job. The city is super professional and on it with the East Stewart.
Thank you. At this point, I'm gonna turn to the other editorial board members and see if they have any questions. Larry, do you have anything at this point? Okay.
Yes, Blake, I guess we'll start with Doc Collins. You know, we talked a little bit about annexation before. But what do you think about future annexations? Do you think they're on the horizon? Do you think they should be, or should there be a moratorium against them?
I mean, that's, that is, okay, so you have property rights, right? If that property owner wants to be annexed in. The, what has been unique in the last four years is this culture of not just annexing in, but rezoning what would otherwise be commercial property or low density residential to these PUD designations. So just to put it in perspective, in the county, your residential is eight units per acre. In the city now, you can instantly double that, right, and have fifteen as a max. But if you go to this designation of PUD, when you get rezoned and annexed in, now you get twenty nine units an acre. And that's a pretty cumbersome process for developer, right? So there's potentially hundreds of thousands of dollars on the front end. And to make it worth it, they need to offset the cost of these large projects by having more units to rent out. So especially if we're making that PUD process cumbersome. Now they're, they can have twenty nine units per acre and with the comp plan changes that were approved by Merritt and the other commissioners in twenty twenty, you can now have units that are under nine hundred square feet, not even count as a unit, they count as a half unit. So you could potentially have even, you know, in the fifties number of apartments on an acre, where otherwise that property would have been, you know, in the county, eight units. So what will make annexation less attractive is for the city to look less appealing for developers in terms of units and also not make this process so cumbersome on the front end by making it a PUD to where it has to be a ton of units to offset the cost and turn into these big West Palm Beach style apartment projects. I'm more proponent of straight zoning is what I would call it, where what you have, if you have commercial, that's what you have. You have residential, that's what you have. Moving away from the direction of rezoning everything to high density apartments through the PUD process. I'm not against PUDs. I don't think they're inherently evil. If the number of units would match what it would otherwise be. But what the culture lately has been maxing out the number of units within that designation and then even counting units as half units to get more apartments and whatever be approved otherwise. So that's what I'm not a fan of.
So you don't have necessarily, you don't necessarily have a objection to the city growing and growing and growing from a geographic standpoint through annexation?
Inherently, no, but you should make it less attractive by having these zoning look more like what the county looks like. So it's not so appealing for a developer to get quadruple the density and on their rentals, it makes so much more money long term.
Thank you. Mr. Matheson? Do you think that, do you think the city should have future annexations? What do you think, where are we at on that, on future annexations?
Well, the the most recent one is a project, Bridgeview. I was the sole vote against that annexation. So I would encourage the editorial board and the residents to look at a little, a little more, a little deeper than just the city as a whole and look at the individual votes and voting record on that. I will and am committed to look at each proposal individually. It is very hard to sit here and and say a blanket statement of annexations, yes or no. But that being said, in the current climate, that bar is incredibly high for me personally. Some, some little facts, the City of Stewart has never forcefully annexed anyone's property into the city. But property owners that are adjacent to city land are allowed to apply for annexations. And they do that for many reasons. Our mileage rate right now is five. The the county's is six and change. Our fire department has been around significantly longer than the county. I'm not talking down upon the county fire department, but a little bit of bragging, Stewart Fire Department is ISO rated number one. That reduces commercial and residential insurance because that's the highest rating a fire department can have. You know, Martin County Sheriff's Office is great. But I'm an incredibly large fan of of City of Stewart PD. They do an excellent job in community policing. So there there are many reasons, not just this this thing of coming back to constantly zoning and density, which I will encourage everyone, my record speaks for itself on that both ways. There's a lot of reasons why people want to annex into the City of Stewart. The city is great. I love it. That's why I chose to run for it. Nothing in the downtown urban core, which does have a comp plan change of encouraging smaller square footage units as opposed to one five thousand square foot unit. It encourages only in the downtown urban overlay zone, which is surrounded entirely by city property outside of that zone. So annexate, annexing will never affect that recent comp plan change that my opponent brought up. There's no physical possible way to annex property there because it's already in the City of Stewart. So I would say at this point, I'm not in favor of annexations, but I don't want to to be held to that a a year from now. And I will look at each proposal through its own individual lens, lens with the the facts around that specific proposal.
Thank you. I'll turn it over to Ed Keller.
Ed, for some reason, I don't think we can hear you. Your mute button is, looks like it's off, but I'm not sure we can hear you. Can anybody hear? You may have to unplug your earphones. Blake, you may want to take it back over if we can't hear Ed.
Okay, I'm going to try and get Ed to send his question through our private chat here. So if you'll bear with us for just a minute.
And Blake, it does look like that our other candidate dropped off. So we'll wait for him to come back on. And if he comes back on, we can add him back.
Okay, bear with us just a minute here. Ah, good question. It's question, Mr. Matheson, we'll start with you and hopefully your opponent can get back on the line with us. But what more can the City of Stewart do to help keep the St. Lucy River clean?
I will try. So the first off is the City of Stewart needs to be year round, day to day, actively engaged with the St. Lucy River. I made that a pledge when I ran and I've kept on on that. Not a commission meeting goes by that I don't discuss the lake. I've spoken at numerous South Florida Water Management District meetings, Army Corps of Engineer meetings. I was voted the point person to speak to both those agencies. I directed the city to hire a river advocate and I've been actively involved in the LoSOM process, which is updating Lake Okeechobee's management for the next possible decade or so. The city needs to remain actively involved because that update is not done. It's scheduled to be done in twenty twenty three to coincide with the Herbert Hoover Dyke. That's specifically talking about Lake O discharges. Since I've been in office, the city has adopted a vision statement of zero regulatory discharges as well as pleading with those agencies that we only want to deal with and manage our own tidal basin runoff. Another thing that the Corps has done in in just building relationships and having the city actively involved is they've regulated the C forty four canal when the lake is lower than thirteen and a half feet, which is currently what we're experiencing now and have experienced the past few months of the the wet season or so. They've regulated the height of that canal into Lake Okeechobee. Prior to about two thousand eighteen or so, they would typically regulate the C forty four canal into the St. Lucie estuary. On the horizon is the C forty four reservoir and STA, which are done and still in a testing phase, so they're only allowing water to be up to ten feet in the C forty four reservoir right now. But within the next year, that will be fully functional and will also help regulate C forty four basin runoff. We have to focus on local water quality projects to help ensure that our own tidal basin runoff, which is just is what we can deal with in and of itself. What I mean by that is such projects that we recently did with Shepherd Park, which is City of Stewart's only park that has a boat ramp. And we removed about a half acre of impervious material concrete there and replaced it with a half acre of pervious concrete, a quarter acre of pervious concrete and a quarter acre of turf parking spaces. We worked in that same project with Orca to create a buffered shoreline example. And they're doing water quality monitoring on that. We also directed water to flow into rain gardens prior to ever exiting that site and going into the St. Lucie River. With each and every project, this is why I I do support PUDs if they come upright, is pushing for for practices like low impact development, which I last year went to a conference hosted by the Marine Resources Council there. And our development director who since left went to that same conference. And that's looking at a project in ways that stormwater can be managed to have it never leave that site is the ultimate goal. I envision in the future creating a buffered shoreline program, similar to a recent this last spring, I created a residential street tree program with my fellow commissioners where we planted thirty gallon pot sized trees, you know, fifteen to twenty foot tall native trees on residents' property to reduce erosion, flooding and increase shade. And and the the restriction was that those trees had to be within ten feet of a sidewalk or a public street to to benefit the public. I have been working with our city staff, the Marine Resources and Orca and have had discussions on ways to to do a similar program, but it would be for private waterfront property owners where we could provide them with a prepackaged buffered shoreline package where they could, they could purchase similar to how they, residents in the City of Stewart purchase a sewer grinder system. Because going beyond city owned land that we can control for buffered shorelines is incredibly important to helping us work with our own tidal basin runoff. How much time you got? Should I?
I, I think we need to stop. Ed, do you have a follow up for Mr. Matheson? If not, I'd like to get Mr. Collins answered to that question.
Yeah, let's, can you hear me now? Can you hear me now, Blake?
I can.
Okay.
If you could repeat the question because Mr. Collins dropped off for a minute.
All right, I'll just put this to Mr. Collins. Just your response for what more can the City of Stewart do to protect the St. Lucie River? So the big thing with the river is, and I'll give, I'll give credit where it's due. Merritt's been an awesome ambassador with Army Corps and South Florida Water Management. He, that's his passion and I hope to pick up where he leaves off. But the main thing is keeping the water level low. There's a few different, you know, reasons why the Army Corps decides and makes a call to discharge. Keeping that water level low going into summer is the big one. So as a healthcare provider, I feel kind of, you know, especially passionate about the human health side of it. I like sort of the direction Brian Mast has been going with calling for lower levels, you know, up until recently, we've not been considering the human health repercussions of microsystems, you know, the things that are released when that blue green algae goes into apoptosis and dumps into the air. But now you're starting to hear conversation about what are the human health repercussions when that's dumping into this estuary? And can we include that in the conversation of what we should consider when we're weighing whether or not we should discharge? But in my opinion, the big thing, what's going to keep it the, the highest likelihood of low discharges or no discharge, which should be our goal, is lower levels going into summer, going into the rainy season. With that, the the river will heal itself.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Collins. Just one quick follow up on on that question, on your answer there. There, there's been a lot of pushback on keeping the lake level low, mainly by water users that are located around the lake, mainly for agricultural irrigation. What's your, what's your response to that? I mean, we got lucky last four years with with very little rain in the summertime. So what's your response to that?
I mean, my, the job interview that I am, or the job I'm interviewing for is to represent the people of Stewart. So the unique proposition I would say is, you know what, our health is more important than navigability or even how easy it is to pull water out for ag purposes, you know, we need to work around and find a different way for that because the health and safety of the people in the city, that's the main artery that runs through here. That's, when that's in the air, that's affecting everybody. I'll see it when there has been discharges. People are coming to my office. They have sinus problems, allergies. There's a lot of nasty side effects. If you look at, look into it, it's pretty bad. The stuff that can happen from those microsystems and that's just one of the class of toxins associated with blue green algae. So yes.
Okay, thank you. And we are a little bit over the the time we talked about, but when, since we've had a a couple of technical issues, we're going to extend this just a little bit. I would like to get closing statements from each of the candidates. And in light of our time considerations, please keep them to to two minutes or less. We, we are up against a hard deadline, so if you will respect that time and Mr. Collins, if you could go first.
So I would say Stewart is a very special and unique place. I know Merritt has said a couple of times that his voting record is distinct from, you know, the other commissioners. It wasn't him. He was low, low density, but besides about five hundred units or so, he's But besides about 500 units or so, he's approved personally 2,500 units. The, what we're facing now already in the summer with traffic, more cars, more people, more runoff, more pressure on the estuary. This is his doing. And so I would say, if you want to keep this place special, we need to vote in people who are specifically low-density that honor property rights, you know, that honor property rights, allow people who own property to develop it. But we do not need to be rezoning everything high-density into the PUD process. This is a very special place for my kids. I want this to be the beautiful Stewart that I've grown up in and I know. I love this little beach town. It's unique, it's one of a kind. And if we do not defend it and fight for it now, like has, you know, previous commissioners in the past have done and fought for, guys like Jeff, you know, if we don't fight for this, we're going to lose it. And so to me, it's now or never. We can't do another 3,000 units over the next four years to try to pack more into the urban service boundary, boundary to fight sprawl. It's nonsense. We need to protect this place. We need to keep it what it is. It's a beautiful little beach town. Like I said, it's one of a kind. And I think it's worth fighting for. I'm not moving. My practice is here. I love surfing here. I don't, I'm not going to Vero. I'm not leaving. So I'm willing to fight for it. And that's why I stepped up and I'm running against Merritt. Because since him and Mike Meyer came in four years ago, there's been a dramatic change in the culture and development and building in the city.
Thank you. Mr. Matheson, closing statement. And again, please keep it to two minutes or less.
Thank you. I do my research and I take the job of Stewart City Commissioner incredibly serious. Again, my top priority when running was I wanted a louder platform to advocate for the future of the St. Lucie River estuary and our waters. I've been integrally involved in the new Lake Okeechobee management system. And as much as my opponent keeps saying that I'm for high-density, that is, that is simply not true. I have the strongest voting record for voting against high-density projects. But being a City of Stewart Commissioner means you must balance the facts, all the facts, property rights, the restrictions and limitations the state puts on you, and the previous approvals that have happened with multiple projects that have come before us where they've been approved for something in the, you know, 2010, 2012, 13 timeframe area. And they want to come back with an adjustment on that project. You know, I balance and research every single issue and put my heart into it. I've done that years before I considered running. I made it my job to attend every City Stewart Commission meeting, starting at about 2017 or so, or 16, actually. I sat on the LPA Advisory Committee for a year. I talked to many, many prior city commissioners to get a balanced opinion on how to run the city. I attend every single Rivers Coalition meeting and have spoken at many of them. I'm the strongest advocate for our river and our waterways. And I believe and have spoken on that, that the city needs to continue actively advocating year-round for that. I've been integrally involved in the Lake Okeechobee management, which my opponent just talked about, about managing the lake higher, lower, sorry. And I've written countless emails on behalf of the city with the city letter address, pushing for that same practice.
Please land the plane here.
So I'm asking everyone out there and the editorial board for their support. And I'd like to continue serving the City of Stewart for another four years.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you to both the candidates. And thank you to those who are watching this video. We encourage everyone to get out and vote in this August election.